Okay, notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, May 14th, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. We have Commissioner Eric Gunther attending by computer and our city council liaison Trish Anks attending by phone. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and the commission's vice chair, Richard Sassen, will be the timekeeper. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission's April 23rd, 2020 regular meeting minutes and the TBH Holding Group LLC final plat?
Move that we approve the consent agenda as published tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. And Aubrey, can you let us know?
Eric signed it.
Eric, got it. Shows to be unanimous. All right. Okay, we will now move to the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is consideration and possible action regarding proposed amendments to the site plan for the building located at 1765 South Friendswood Drive, also known as Vergata Commons Building A. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, Aubrey, would you please provide the staff summary?
Yes, sir. This is the existing building at Vergata Commons. This is the one that is parallel to FM 518 and I guess nearest Chick-fil-A. They're going to add just 735 square feet of leased space to the end of the building. There was originally a drive-through planned for this end of the building, but they didn't get any tenants that wanted or needed the drive-through, and so they're just going to add some additional space to accommodate tenants at the end of that building.
Perfect. Is the applicant here by chance? They have any, would they like to make any comments at this time?
They're not here.
Okay. Mr. Sassen?
Oh, I guess I-
Question?
I assume the applicant would be here, I'm just asking some questions, but I kind of like what the look is. I think it's going to be nice. It's got some nice windows. What it's got right now is kind of plain, and so this is only an improvement, in my opinion. I couldn't get 735 feet. When I did the measuring on it, they had one quarter inch equals a foot, and it was one and a half. Anyway, it was six by 25 feet. It's like I got 300 feet, so I'm not quite sure how we got 735 feet, but that's not really germane to passing this or not. I was curious, do we know, Aubrey, if the curb is staying as it is, or is that going to be impacted by this?
No, the existing bill, the existing, the addition will go in the grassy area that's there.
Okay, is there going to be any grass left, or is it going to be right to the curb almost? It looks like it's, it's kind of hard to figure. Not much, huh?
A little bit.
A little bit. Okay, okay, so, and we're going to lose those crepe myrtles, I guess, that are there now. No, I have no other questions.
Dick, any questions?
No, sir.
Brett?
Nope.
Okay, the only question is just confirming, I know, I know the answer- Eric? Oh, sorry, you're right. Eric, any questions?
I'm in trouble with the, what's the question? Do we know what's going to be going in there?
I don't know what's going in there at this time. I know they had, I think they're adding this space in order to make room for two tenants in the end of the building.
I'm sorry, one more time, I'm sorry.
I think they're making room for two tenants to go in the end of the building, but I don't know who they are.
With the idea of having a drive-through, is that right?
No, it's just a, no, the drive-through is not going to be built, it's just an addition with windows on the end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good, sorry, thank you. You're going to have to keep reminding me, but hopefully I'll get it. But Aubrey, I had one question, and I think it more falls under you anyway. I'm just confirming, I'm sure, I know it happened, but just confirming that with this small space addition, all the, the coverage requirements and parking space requirements, that this had no real impact on that, right? Okay, I just, just double checking. Okay, so I, barring any other questions, all those, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Looks to be unanimous. The next item, action item is consideration and possible action regarding the site plan for the Friendswood Retail Shell Building to be located at 1720 South Friendswood Drive. Is there a motion?
Oh, that was quick. Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Eric.
Aubrey, is there a summary?
Yes, sir. This is, so this is the site on FM 518 between the shopping center where the Great American Cookie Company and the Goodwill is, Bo Yen and Maso Sushi. So it's the detention pond that currently has chain link fencing around it. They are going to cover up the front part of that detention pond, and you could see on the site plan, there's going to be a detention pond area that will remain at the rear, but this will be a new retail building that will front 518. It's approximately 10,000 square feet. There is a proposed tenant for the building right now that will house some of the building. It'll be a pet store, and then the remaining, the remainder of the building is yet to be leased. So they have gone through the drainage district in order to account for the detention that that pond was providing for existing development, and so this will get rid of that chain link that's kind of an eyesore on 518, and I think it'll improve the site a lot. They don't have any remaining comments, and they are in compliance with all the COD requirements, as well as the CSC zoning district.
Thank you. Is the applicant here and would like to make any comments?
Is there a representative for, oh, nobody here.
Okay, okay, just checking. Mr. Sassen?
Okay, so I guess, Aubrey, you're on to answer questions about what this application looks like, and so you're allowed to say "I don't know" to any of my questions.
Okay.
Are both fences coming down, both sides? There's a fence on either side, one on the, what I'll call the HEB Shopping Center side, and then the Maso Sushi, there's one on each side.
It goes around the perimeter of the property.
Oh, it probably goes on the back, too. I didn't really pay attention to that.
Yes, all of that will be coming down.
So all the fence, all that chain link on, that's, that will be a big improvement.
Yes.
Do you know how they're going to access the parking, parking in the back? It looks like it's a narrow lot, building kind of covers the whole lot, but there's parking in the back. Is that coming from the HEB Shopping Center side?
Yes, there's a shared access that goes behind, you can go the back way of all those buildings to get to HEB. I think the, the gem recently changed some of their walls back there, but-
To glass, yeah, it looks nice, yeah.
So that's a shared access drive that they will use to access the parking in the rear.
Gotcha, yeah, kind of the shortcut to HEB if you're coming from 518 and don't want to deal with the light. Will you be able to get to it from the Maso Sushi side? I can't say that too many times, can I?
They are going to take the driveway to the property line.
Okay.
We, I contacted the owner of Maso Sushi, and he was not in favor of connecting the driveways at this time.
Okay, so he, either party can block it, and right now they don't have agreement for Maso Sushi, but they, but they'll have primary access off that, what looks like a back drive, kind of a garage parking back line, but it'll start looking nicer now that it has a building on it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I really like the trees. I was going to tell the applicant that. They have some sycamores, which is rare, and I like the diversity and the, and the cypress, bald cypress, those will be, those will be nice. Do you know where the power's coming from? Right now, there is a line that goes between the HEB Shopping Center, it goes about halfway down, looks pretty awful, to be honest. Comes down, and then it goes across to HEB. I'm guessing that's the closest place, and I'm afraid that's going to be expanded more, but-
No new poles.
No new poles, yeah.
Yeah, Becky made sure they weren't going to put any more new poles, so they are going to put another transformer on one of the existing poles.
Probably the one that's halfway down.
And then they'll, their service line has to be underground.
Right, so they will not, there'll be no new additions to what is, got lots of draping wires all over there.
Yeah.
Which kind of cheapens the whole area, but, so it's not going to get worse. It won't get better, but it won't get worse.
Right.
So, we're going to lose some of the drainage, the onsite storage, it's basically going to be cut in half, or maybe a little more than half. I heard there was going to be some underground storage, but I couldn't tell where that was going. Is that going on this lot, or somewhere offsite?
It would go underneath this building.
Underneath the building?
Yeah, or underneath the parking lot, or I-
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, that wasn't, if it was shown on the drawing, I didn't see it, but-
Yeah, no, it has to be, we can't lose the drainage, because I, I mean, it's there, so it has to be accounted for. So it'll just be traded out, it'll be, you just won't see it underground.
So what you described to me, Becky, was some pipes, some big kind of pipes that will normally be dry, and they're above the water table, and therefore they will tend to normally drain, it's a void space, and it's sitting underneath the parking lot. It hadn't occurred to me that you put it there. Okay, and I guess the water table's low enough for it all to work. People smarter than me have looked at this and figured out that the water thing works, okay? And I saw there's a sidewalk in front, I was very pleased. I shouldn't ask you this question, I should know the answer myself, but I don't. Do you know if it, is there a sidewalk on either side? I meant to look at that, and I didn't.
There is not in front of Maso, and I don't think there is in front of-
I don't think there is in front of HEB either, no, I agree. I think that's right, so, okay, but we got to start somewhere. I'm glad we're starting, and so I'm pleased with that. If they had put theirs in two years ago, Maso would have then put one on, and we'd had, be the starting of having a walkable city. So that was all my questions. Aubrey, you actually answered every one, I'm impressed, well done. That's all I have, thanks.
Any questions, Eric?
I had a question about access, because it gets pretty busy going back to HEB. Is that going to be, is that access going to be widened at all?
No, I believe that's a 24-foot access easement, so it won't be widened at this time.
Did you hear the answer?
No.
Oh, are we froze?
Yeah, I think he froze up.
Eric, anything else?
Did you hear that? The access is not going to be widened at this time. It's, I think, 24 feet.
He's crafting a-
And then there were four.
I think we lost him.
Want us to wait a moment while you're getting back?
Yeah, he's offline. Go ahead.
Okay.
We'll get him if he comes back.
Okay, Brett, any questions?
I really don't have any questions. Just that comment about Maso Sushi not agreeing to allow access, I thought that was a city ordinance where they had to have common access driveways. Am I wrong about that, or?
Well, the owner would have to give permission for them to construct the driveway on his property.
Okay.
Since it's already there.
Okay, well, it does look like they don't have any, any curb cuts on the, to Friendswood Drive, so it looks like they're going to utilize the other access point, so I'm okay with everything.
Dick?
I just, I'm not sure we could talk through this. I'm, I'm trying to figure out where the drainage is, the detention pond that was affected and has to be replaced. I can't quite figure this out, looking at this plat. I see a detention pond on the left side here, and I see the building on the right side. It's, the, the part on the left is the old detention?
Yeah, so they're going to basically revamp it and make it smaller.
Okay.
So it'll have, it's got to have the, the banks and the edges, so it's going to be smaller and maybe deeper, I'm not sure, but the other storage is going to be underneath.
Was underneath, I heard, I heard that, okay, thanks, yeah.
Currently, it's one big bathtub. The entire lot is just a big bathtub.
Okay.
And so half the bathtub is now going to be, have a building on it.
I see, so this, this part that remains at the left is just a small part of what was-
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, okay, I got it, thank you, no, no further questions.
Do we have Eric back?
Yes, so to answer your question, the access easement is going to remain as is. I believe it's 24 feet wide, so it's not going to change.
Okay, one other question is, why was it called Shell Building? I kept, I kept looking for gas pumps and why was it called that?
It's just a retail shell, built like a, just an empty building. They'll come in and the, they'll do build-outs to build out the businesses on the inside.
Okay, thanks, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, so I just had a few, most of my questions got, got asked already. So just to confirm, is it retention or detention? I know now what it is, but in the future, is it going to hold water or not?
It's a dry pond.
Okay.
Detention.
Okay, just confirming, and just, and the depth, you thought it might be a little deeper when they're done than it is now, okay? Okay, I'd hope the applicant was going to be here as well tonight, because I, in looking at the plans, I mean, this, this is definitely an upgrade, huge upgrade to that whole area that's a little bit of an eyesore, so that's great, but in looking at the way the building's oriented, it, there's one whole wall that, it's, everybody's got to come down through that, that driveway easement, and it's a blank wall. I was going to mention that they really ought to do something to the side of that building to upgrade the landscaping, do something, but anyway, it's just a blank wall. It's, you know, their frontage is all looking towards 518, but it's, it's minor. That was just a comment I was going to make to them if they'd have been here, in looking at, but all, all in all, I think, a nice upgrade. Okay, so we have a, no further, unless there are further questions?
Can I, yeah, if I can go one more time. Access, there is no access directly off 518 on this property, right? It's all going to be down that same driveway that goes behind the HEB Shopping Center?
Yes.
Okay, and so they'll come down that way and tie in either near the front parking lot or to the back parking lot?
Yeah, they've got both, so when you pull into that driveway, there will be a driveway into their front parking lot, and then if you keep going, you'll get behind the building.
And the first one will go underneath those wires, and the second one will be passed where the wire, the transformers are, and, and it goes in. Okay, that wasn't real clear on the drawing, but that makes sense, because there was no other way to get there, because they had bushes all across the front, and one less access to 518 is probably good, because there's a lot of congestion there now.
Yeah, they wouldn't get another driveway from Tech Dot. It's for, a minimum of 450 feet separation for another driveway, since, because of the speed limit on 518.
Yeah, and it's a narrow lot, so the, they've gotten people on both sides, have already taken the available slots, spots.
Yeah, Maso doesn't even have a driveway off of 518.
Oh.
Their access is off of Hunter's.
I obviously don't eat sushi often enough, okay? Thank you, Aubrey.
Okay.
Joe?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
What, asking you the question, are there going to be stop signs required anywhere in that area? I mean, there is a lot of traffic through there, so, do, can we require that, or is that just out of our?
It's, it's all, it's basically all private drives. I believe there is a stop sign behind Gina's, if you're going towards HEB.
There is, there is.
But I, I don't know that we have any requirements to add stop signs back there, other than, I mean, just the owners adding them, or the developer.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's some blind spots back there, so at least if we can bring that to people's attention, because there, there's going to be a lot of traffic. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
No, but you're right, there's a lot of traffic already, now this is going to add to that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Shows to be unanimous. Okay, the next action item is consideration and possible action regarding the partial preliminary plat of Avalon at Friendswood Section 1, a private subdivision being 68.101 acres of land out of the Mary Fabro survey A69, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Yes, sir. You'll recognize this from the last agenda. This is the Avalon at Friendswood, Section 1. This is going to be a private section. In this particular plat is a partial plat, it actually includes 50 lots that will have access from the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. That access will come from the West Ranch side initially. The developer is going to extend a little bit of the Boulevard to be able to gain access for these first 50 lots. At the last meeting, there was some outstanding conditions regarding easements and labeling and things like that. They have addressed all of those comments at this time, and just to, just keeping them in our forefront, these are items that don't need to hold up the plat, but just, just keeping them on our list and our radar so we don't lose track. The other remaining items is just a tree survey is going to be required at the time the infrastructure plans are submitted. The landscape plan for the details along Friendswood Lakes Boulevard are going to be required as well with the construction plans and final plat, and then the inter-local, inter-local agreement, or, you know, some type of agreement with League City for future development. That's still in the works. So, like I said, nothing to hold up the preliminary plat at this time. They meet all the requirements, and we'll continue to work with them through the construction plan reviews.
So I just want to, before we start the discussion, I just want to confirm, I heard what you said. So the remaining items, they've taken care of all the required items, but the remaining items that are listed are, just as notes to be taken care of at some point, are not required for the plat approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, discussion, we'll move to discussion, Brett, any-
Is the applicant here?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a great question. Yeah, do you have any comments, or please, please come to the podium if you would, state your name?
Bobby Skinner with Taylor Morrison, Director of Land Development. Happy to see you guys again. Really just here to answer questions when, at, at the last meeting that I spoke at, indicated that we were in discussions with City of League City. I hesitated to share details, because we're still working through various options. We have had very positive interaction. Mr. Hoover at League City is, is in favor of a, of a proposed land swap. I believe everybody agrees that it makes sense that we get these 37 lots into Friendswood. That's what I said my intent was last time, continuing to work towards that end. We're making progress. I've not encountered anything that makes me think it's not going to happen. Obviously, it's not happening as quickly as I'd like to make it happen, but I believe we are close to putting something in writing that we can put in front of both cities so that we, so that we've got a starting point and a path forward. But, but nothing but good news to report, not a whole lot, but, but we're headed the right direction. So I, I'm confident that we will get it done. Like I said, everybody agrees it makes sense, it's, it's just working through the mechanics to make it happen.
Good job on taking care of the outstanding items on the plat, so-
Thank you.
Make it easier.
Thank you, I'll pass that along to, to my team. They, they jumped through some hoops to make it happen quickly.
Okay, well, if you would, just hang on for a second, in case there's any questions over here, Brett?
Well, it's good to hear. It sounds like Friendswood is going to get a little bit bigger in the future, so that's good.
That's the point.
This is more of an Aubrey question, so the city engineer's okay with everything proposed. I know the last time, we had a big discussion about the, the loop water system and all that, so if the city engineer, city engineer's satisfied, then I'm satisfied, so.
Yes, so the main concern was the water line, and so they are going to, during the construction plan review, they're going to be required to put an automatic flush valve at the, it's going to have a, a little loop at the end, and with an automatic flush valve in order to avoid the dead, be able to flush the water out of the end of the system and not have a dead end down there, so.
Okay, and, and they'll do that on a, I guess, a set maintenance schedule to flush it, just like they do for hydrants, I guess?
Yes, yes.
All right, I have nothing else, go ahead.
And just to tag on to that, the intent is that we don't do that, except perhaps on a temporary basis. The, the intent is, by the time we get to the point of, of a contract-
Get it all looped in?
Yeah, that we've got it all tied out, and the loop will be around the lake through those 37 lots.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Anything else?
No.
Dick?
The term "land swap" was used, and I'm trying to understand what that means. Is that square footage, acreage on one side of the border going to the other and vice versa somewhere else?
Um-
I, I've never heard this term before, so I'm trying to figure out.
I, I believe maybe the easiest way to think about it is, is shifting the, the boundary line between the two cities. And we're, we're going to push in one area and pull in another area where it makes sense for both cities, and, and that's, I think, the very simple way to think of it. The, we, we identified a, a, an odd-shaped tract that will obviously be commercial. The value of the tract is that there's additional land adjacent to it, but that additional land is in League City, and so the idea is that, that-
Okay.
We prove up some numbers on value, that, quite honestly, that there's, there's a little, I don't know, black magic on, okay, the sales tax is going to be, or what have you, but we think it's fairly close to a wash on value at the end of the day.
It's, it sounds-
I personally believe the 37 lots are more valuable, because we're going to do something with those pretty quickly. The commercial, you know, at whatever point the Grand Parkway comes through, I expect something will happen there, but that's, you know, a little ways down the road.
Yeah, thank you, I was just trying to figure out if, if Friendswood had to sort of ante up some square footage somewhere to offset, that's, that's why I was trying to figure out how that worked.
That would be it, it's this odd-shaped commercial in exchange for the 37 lots.
Now, I, I don't know, maybe this is an Aubrey question, so from West Boulevard back to the eastern point of this property is going to be developed by Avalon, is that what I heard?
From, so Friendswood Lakes Boulevard already exists up until the edge of this property.
Mm-hmm.
So they'll extend Friendswood Lakes Boulevard to the entrance of this subdivision.
Oh, from the, from 528 side?
No, from the West Ranch side.
Okay.
So if you go down West Boulevard-
Right.
You go to Friendswood Lakes Boulevard and take a right-
Oh, it is there, that's right.
The road is there, and it deadens, so they'll be extending it there.
Sorry. Thank you.
Eric, do you have any questions?
So did I hear that the 37 lots are going to become part of Friendswood at one time? Is that right, or become part of Friendswood?
That's the intent, right.
Correct. So, I mean, my left-hand column says, that, that can't be an easy thing to do. I mean, does the city agree that's going to be something that's not a big deal?
I, I don't know how big of a deal it's going to be, I mean, we haven't seen the proposal yet, but, I mean, we're definitely open to consider, you know, any options.
Okay, I guess the other question I've got, and I didn't have the luxury of participating last week or two weeks ago, but why did, why did they decide to build on this side when we've got all these issues? Why didn't we build on the other side first?
The, the Friendswood, their access depends on the extension of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, and the, that project got a little bit delayed, and so there, if they go in from this side, they're, they are actually going to take on the responsibility of extending a small portion of the Boulevard to provide their own access.
So they couldn't have built on, I'll call it the, the north side of Friendswood?
No, because they would have had to, no, they would have, they would have had to extend all the way from Sterling Creek and down, so it's, it's a lot further distance, and that, that project is underway with Galveston County.
Okay, and I assume that if this deal isn't done, for folks that are going to buy homes there, they're going to disclose that's an open issue, right?
Yeah, we, we'll have to have some type of resolution on the- Yeah, we, we'll have to have some type of resolution on the League City side before we move forward with any more sections of this subdivision.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sessom?
Yeah, just to go back one more time, just to make sure I understand, the landscape plan details, we say the developer is responsible for the landscape plan and the landscaping along Friendswood Lake Boulevard, and that's along all of their land. So, someone else is building the road, but they're doing the landscaping, is that how I understand it?
Yes.
I didn't realize that. Okay, that's good to know. Okay. Just one comment on our new form. To me, it's, it's a little confusing. It, the way it's worded, and this is, maybe we can take it offline, but it just says the plans were reviewed and these are the options, approve, conditional approval or disapproval, but it doesn't tell me what the conclusion was so much, other than outstanding conditions. It says none on the next page, so I guess maybe that all refers back, but maybe I'll get better at reading the form, I don't know, but it was a little confusing to me. And that's just an internal staff kind of comment, maybe. And so, one of my questions was on the dead end line, and from what I understand, there's going to be an automatic flush valve that's going to go on periodically and just kind of purge a little bit of water out until you, we can get this all. So, it's going to cost you a little bit on operating costs, but ultimately, it'll save you some money and, and it'll cost a little bit of water just to purge this thing out. And I guess there's some guidelines on how often this has to burp water out and keep the line kind of clean. Okay. That makes sense. I didn't understand how you were going to fix it, to be honest. I was curious to see what the answer would be, and it seems like a, a reasonable approach. There, there was a comment on the earlier version that we saw, said the building lot is not on the 25-foot PUD line. Can you explain what that all means? I didn't understand. I mean, I guess it's all cleared up now, so it's kind of water under the bridge, but I, I wasn't, wasn't curious what that was all about.
So, the, the, the front building line is 25 feet.
Which building?
Front building line for each individual.
Oh, for every building, right, okay. Not, not, we're not talking any particular one, right?
All residential lots have a 25-foot minimum front building line. So, they had proposed a 26, so they're pushing it back, which is not, I mean, they're still in compliance because they're pushing it back.
It's a minimum, not a maximum, right?
The problem was that they were encumbering the front yard with all easements. So, they were putting a 10-foot water or sewer easement, whichever side of the street the water sewer line was on, and then behind that was a 16-foot UE. So, 26 feet of the front yard was encumbered with easement.
So, that everyone's front yard was completely easement listed, okay?
Yes. So.
So, and presumably, you planted a tree and then you'd have to rip out the tree if they needed access because the land or the homeowner, yeah, that's an issue, okay?
And we require a tree in the front, one tree in front yard for every hot lot. So, that was a conflict. So, the water, water and sewer lines should be put in the roadway.
Right.
If there's radiuses or turns that the lines make that they can't fit within the roadway, then we may have some, like, you know, small easements over, like, along corners or something like that.
Right.
So, that's things we're going to work through in the construction plans.
But they agreed you're going to be moving those lines into the street then? Because I know you had suggested that last time, and I had never heard you guys saying, yes, that's a good idea, we should do that.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good. Yes, that's a good idea, we should do that. Good.
We kind of have the expectation, we're planting trees in yards.
Right. And, and the trees should not be subject to the easement, right? Yeah.
Right. Part of the, part of the challenge that, that I think staff's aware of, Texas New Mexico Power has dictated to us that the utility, the dry utilities are going to go in the front yards.
The dry utilities?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's 16 feet of that 26. I, I'm. I've not had much success in, in having Texas New Mexico bend the rules.
Understood.
If you will. So, so I'm, I'm kind of limited based on what they're dictating to me.
But at least the 10-foot on the water, you can get around, you can get around the 10-foot easement on the water with, that's under your control, and so you've chosen to do something different on that?
Right, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. And then you're trying to figure out what to do with TNMP, yeah?
And I, I, I think it's going to be a, a process with us and with staff on, on, okay, where the water line easements need to be. As Aubrey said, they can fit inside the right-of-way, so that means we can pull the 16-foot UE up and we've got plenty of room for trees and.
There you go. Okay.
I think, I think she's right. It, it might get kind of tight on some, on some cul-de-sacs, something like that. But we'll, you know, we'll, we'll do everything that we can do, and obviously, we're going to make sure these, these front yards look beautiful.
Yeah. That's good. I, I, I like where you're going. Can you tell me when your plan is to put the, the, I'll call it a recreation center, but whatever it is that you're calling the main building in there? Is that, is that kind of part two or part three, or what, when do you plan to do?
As, as quickly as I get the site ready.
Okay.
We'll begin.
Gotcha. But that's not part of this plan, because it's not platted. Not the buildings, not, I'm talking about the, the recreation center, the.
The park or the, the public space?
Yeah, the public space, the access to the.
That's right at the front door.
Right.
As you go south towards the large lake.
You want that, I can see, and I would want that, and I think that's.
Absolutely, that's going to be.
That's going to be the centerpiece.
Right around the corner from the model park and, yes, sir.
That's going to be the thing you show off when people are coming in to look, and it's going to look nice, I think.
I'm quite certain I'll be asked, how come I'm not done yet?
Good. If not by me, by somebody else. Okay, thank you, Robert. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Had just, I think, two easy questions. One is, how long of the road extension or do you know, do you remember how long the road that you're extending, the Friendswood Parkway? Friendswood Lakes Parkway, whatever, that, the road that we're extending to allow you access?
From West Ranch?
Yes.
$330,000 worth.
You remember it that way, okay.
I couldn't tell you how many.
Okay, okay. It's, it's, it looks short on the drawing, I just.
It is, it is.
Right, right.
It's 191 feet.
Okay, okay.
Enough to get to that first intersection.
Okay. Okay, somewhere in there, okay. I, I just wanted, I just wanted to have a scale, because I saw the drawing, I saw it on there.
That's a business answer right there.
Yeah, yeah. Everything else is just detailed.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. No, good answer. So, I, I heard the 25-foot build line and then I heard 26. Is it ultimately going to be 25 or 26?
25.
Okay.
That's the plan.
I just, I just want to make sure I had it right. Thank you very much.
They're going to extend it.
It looks like they're having a sidebar. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
I just had one thing. I just wanted to point out that, you know, with some concerns about the land swap, it has been done before between League City and, and Friendswood. That's how we obtained commercial funds on 528 going towards the freeway, so it's been done before. So, there's history in doing that, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you very much. Okay, and just making sure that we have the motion right for the new rules. At this point, because there's no deficiencies in the, in the preliminary plat, we're just going to have a, we had a motion to approve, and that's, we're good with it. Okay, just double checking with the new rules.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to approve and a second? All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Good. Okay, the next action item is consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat, First Baptist Church Number 2, a subdivision of 9.49 acres of land situated in the South McKissick Survey Abstract Number 151, being a replat of all of Lot 1 in Block 1 and all of Lot 1 in Block 2 of the final plat of First Baptist Church of Friendswood, and being portions of the residue of Lot 1 and Lot 2 in Block 2 of the Friendswood subdivision, including an unrecorded portion of East Heritage Drive, as recorded in Volume 254, Page 37 of the Galveston County Deeds Records, and transferred to Plat Record 7, Page 20 of the Galveston County Map Records, and Lot Number 1 of Harper Subdivision, an unrecorded subdivision, all in Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. And I'm not reading that again. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve with the staff comments included or outstanding conditions?
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey, would you please provide the staff summary, please?
Yes, sir. So, First Baptist Church has been on our agendas a lot lately. We're getting them through all these processes. So, this is their preliminary plat. So, this will basically formalize the plating of all the tracts that they own. This does include the right-of-way vacation that we approved for the little cul-de-sac that was for the three residential lots. So, this cleans up everything as far as plating. All the build lines are, front build lines are in accordance with the current zoning districts that are on the properties. So, they do have a few outstanding conditions, which include, there was an acreage discrepancy between the title block and the owner acknowledgement, so the title report needs to, and the title report needs to remove Track 5. They need to add a representative's name in the title block, correct the vicinity map scale. Add the regulation matrices for the zoning districts of single-family residential, multifamily, multifamily residential, low-density and downtown district. Those matrices being on the face of the plat are useful later during plan review. You know, the setbacks are right there on the plat for future reference. And then, I believe, so the new 8-foot sidewalks that are required as part of the downtown district on 209 and 111 East Heritage, if those sidewalks aren't going to fit within the right-of-way, they need to add easements for those sidewalks. It's much cleaner to do it now. They have a plan, and so we can add those on the plat. And then, to remove the signature blocks, we only need signature blocks on final plat.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Would they like to make any comments at this point? Or if you, if you could please come to the podium and state your name?
I'm Eric Gralem with Total Surveyors. All this stuff that she just mentioned has been since taken care of. And then I actually just received a new title report today at probably 3 o'clock, and we had them add in that piece of right-of-way, the quitclaim deed over to that. Really, we don't really have any issues beyond that. We've pretty much handled all the comments, so.
Okay.
Unless you all have any other questions about it?
Well, why don't you hang, if you could just hang up there for just a second, just in case there's, there's a question? Rich?
Yeah, so do we normally show sidewalks on plats, or is that just something we're bringing up for right-of-way?
Easements are on plats.
Easements on plats, so sidewalks will be handled on the site plan when we get that, and, and we'll be talking about where those go and how are those sufficient and all that good stuff?
So, you've already considered that with the SUP?
Oh, okay.
That we've already approved and made recommendation to council. That has their sidewalks shown on that. That's the reason why we know there are sidewalks.
Okay.
That are not within the right-of-way that they need to add easements for.
Because it was shown on, well done.
Yes.
Good, thank you. And I see all these objections as just basically clerical things.
Yes. Yeah, if they make the corrections, we can bring it back to you next meeting and.
So, that was my other question, so we do have to vote on it formally, even though it's clerical stuff.
Yes.
So, we'll see this again next time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I had, thanks.
Dick? Brett?
My only concern was, like I said, they're all clerical except for the 8-foot sidewalk easement, but it sounds like that's taken care of, so I'm good.
It's been added back to it.
Good. I'm good.
Great. Eric, do you have any comments or questions?
No, sir.
I was sure hoping somebody had some more questions, because I was going to have to look for the exact language we're going to have to use under this new ruling. But I, I have no, I have no further comments. Thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
So, we have right now before us a motion to approve with staff comments. Is that sufficient?
He said with conditions.
Ah, perfect.
I did it right.
You did.
All right. Good job.
You get a gold star today.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, our last action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to City Council regarding amendments to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure 2019-15 to remove the 90-day limit on denied agenda items. Is there a motion?
I guess motion to approve.
Second.
Aubrey?
So, this is, changes to our current rules of procedure, and I mentioned this at the last meeting when I was explaining the new state law requirements. So, our rules of procedure state that a, when a motion or other measure has been defeated, that the same identical question can't come back to the commission for 90 days. So, with this new House Bill 3167, we can't put a timeframe on the applicant to resubmit. And so, we need, so we added the, an exception to our current rule. So, the rule's not going away, because that House Bill only applies to plats and items under Chapter 212 of the Local Government Code, which is not site plans that are regulated by Chapter 211. So, we're going to leave the rule, so we don't avoid any unintended consequences. And so, the exception is just going to be that unless the item is a plat or plan being submitted to the commission in accordance with the approval procedures outlined in Chapter 212 of the Local Government Code. So, we'll amend our rule to state that. This is a resolution, and it just requires one reading by City Council to be approved. So, if we approve this tonight, we'll forward it on to council for the June council meeting. And staff is still work, we're working through the subdivision ordinance changes to incorporate all of this as well.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, Rich?
No, I have, I have no comments.
Brett?
So, this 90-day rule, just for plats only, so site plans will still be a 90-day deal?
Yes.
Okay. I would be in favor of just doing site plan 2 to reduce that, but what was the genesis of the 90 days? How that, why, why that number?
Honestly, I don't know. I, I know we've kind of used it a few times, you know, over the years. I really couldn't think of a specific time that, that it was a useful tool, but, I mean, if, you know, if, if we go a year and maybe pay attention, and, I mean, if it needs to go away, we can always change it.
Okay.
One approval by City Council to change the resolution, but like I said, I didn't want to just throw it out completely. So.
Okay. Just something we might consider, because one time it could be an issue. If you don't have four commissioners seated and one votes no, then the applicant is done for 90 days, so that's why it's important to have at least five here, so you avoid that 90-day rule, but I'm, I'm, that's all I have, I'm okay with the, going with it.
Dick, any comments? Eric, any comments on this?
No, sir.
I have, I have none either. So, we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay. Our next item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 28th, which, just to note, that is Memorial Day week, so if anybody's not going to be here, if you can let me know. And then the meeting after that would be Thursday, June 11th.
And just out of curiosity, since it is close to a holiday, we already have items for that meeting?
Uh, yes, we'll have the First Baptist Church preliminary plat back on there, most likely. If they've already addressed all their comments, then we'll get that back on.
Okay, great. Communications are next, commissioner updates. Do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate, suggestions for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, general comments, or updates from liaison assignments? I'll start to my left, Mr. Sessom?
Just a time to talk about the ordinance subcommittee, or is that coming up again? Okay. I notice it's, it's part C, I'm kind of jumping ahead from A to C.
I'm just going for it all.
There you go, okay. So we need to have a meeting on the ordinance subcommittee, and hopefully it happens maybe next week, Becky. Dick, on the, the city council's asked us to look at the height requirement within, within the downtown, so we need to. Our little, our little group needs to kind of huddle and talk about it, and then the larger group needs to, and then we wanna get it back to city council pretty quick, so. I'm guessing we'll be kind of, I was hoping Marcus was here. If he's not gonna be around, we may draft you, Joe, if you have time.
Yeah, if he can't make it.
Because we wanna get this thing moving and going forward, so. Good. That, that's all I had.
Great. Eric, any comments?
No, sir.
Brett?
Yeah, not this time, no.
Dick?
Uh, there is a ZBOA coming up on Tuesday, which I'll attend and let you know.
Great, thank you for reminding me. Okay, I, I have nothing at this time. Next is our commission, our council liaison update, Ms. Hanks?
I have nothing at this time. Thanks, thanks, everyone, for meeting.
No, no, thanks, Trish. Next are staff updates. Aubrey?
Yes, I emailed the DRC report for April, and I missed a couple of items from March, so it's March and April. Also, just to follow up on what Rich was talking about with the ordinance subcommittee needing to meet. City council did approve the first reading of the First Baptist Church SUP with P and Z's recommendation of the maximum seventy-foot height, but asked the commission to go back and look at that rule again. So the ordinance was amended to say that First Baptist Church would comply with the downtown district regulations, basically. And so if those regulations are changed, then they'll comply with those regulations. So that's, they've asked the commission to go back and look at that. So that will be coming to you quite quickly, because the church is, you know, ready to go on that project. And then I did send the ZBOA summary of the meeting coming up on Tuesday. It's a floodplain lot. It's also having to dedicate right-of-way to clean up Heritage Drive. I don't know how that road was built without, it's the biggest mess. So if this property, it's Two Twelve East Heritage, is gonna clean up part of that, and then the old Friendswood Healthcare has been acquired, and they are looking to redevelop that, so we're gonna require them to plat as well, so it will all be clean eventually, so. That's where that's coming from.
Now with that, the first one, the, the mo-home and replating that, is that gonna come, that will come before us, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay, just double-checking. Becky, anything?
No, sir.
Mary Kay, anything? No, thank you for being here. Okay, if nothing else, then the May fourteenth, twenty-twenty Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming.